This is a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. If you would join me in a moment of silent reflection before we get going here. Thank you. Now, if you'd rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Dricke is absent. Commissioner Zajak is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Gross is absent. And Commissioner Plank is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have correspondence from Van Buren County. I am looking for a motion to receive and place on file.
So I'm little Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. It wrote motion passes. I don't remember six on the agenda is called to the public. This is the first of two called to the public. The first call to the public is three minutes in duration. The second is two minutes in duration. That's at the, towards the end of the meeting. If you want to speak here, you should have filled out a card and given it to our clerk or secretary, and she'll call you up. There, I want to also remind people that when you are about 15 seconds, I'll just comment as politely as I can while I interrupt you, that you have 15 seconds. And then I've got a timer on my phone. It's going to beep when the three minutes is up. And then you, your time is up at when you hear the beep. And then the last thing I want to mention, just as a reminder, this is your opportunity to present information that you feel is important, that the Board of Commissioners knows your opinion or your facts, but it's not a two-way conversation. So I'll leave it at that and ask our clerk to call the first person.
Janine Ayer from Genoa Township.
And also, if you'd speak into the mic so that people on Zoom can hear you, that'd be great.
Good evening, Janine Ayer, Genoa Township. We are in pursuit of petition concerning this election process of the Livingston County Department. Starting with all the last coming up here, of the point of this law, one of the most obvious decisions applied to the former. Having been impacted by the president of the county. It is clear now that the information we directed to them from the group speaks to the FDA and the Department of Health and Security. They're not only alone, Mr. Michael, already alone. Contrary to what these organizations meant, it turned out that COVID was not a disease of the vaccinated. The vaccine certainly did not stop the provision of vaccines. Cancel for the weekend and the wearing of masks hasn't had no significance on effect on curbing transmission. Though these agencies denied it, there were in fact that were effective in aiding outpatient recovery of COVID. The policy directives they passed on to local health departments were unwisely based on COVID cases. And COVID cases were based on a flawed PCR test that was eventually recalled and acknowledged as producing many false positives and not being able to distinguish between COVID and the flu. Hindsight is 2020. And I acknowledge that while navigating COVID, our health department did not have the understanding we now have. However, the science that disproved the messaging coming from the CDC and the MDHHS was available and largely not taken into account by our health department, unfortunately. There were primarily two categories of victims of the health policy they rubber stamped. First, businesses. The Livingston County Health Department was active in investigating and reporting businesses that were not enforcing the state's mask policy. This threatened the business's license to operate and the livelihood of these Livingston County business owners. Children were also victims. The health department aided school districts in enforcing the quarantining of healthy children to exclude them from school and extracurricular activities and events just because they could have been exposed to COVID. Parents received calls and emails from the health department commanding them to keep their kids out of school and society just because they may have been exposed to COVID. This caused children to suffer academically, socially, mentally, physically, and emotionally. Younger children face difficulties in language learning because they could not see the mouth of their masked teachers. At times, young athletes were forced to mask while participating in their sport. All this to explain just how consequential this decision of yours is. It warrants a rigorous and exhaustive search for a uniquely qualified individual. Thank you.
Bill Reiber, Genoa Township.
Good evening, everybody. Oh yeah, so Bill Reiber, Genoa Township. Kind of echoing what Janine put together right there. My son, when COVID hit, was going to Clearing College and his campus closed down. They had to do everything remotely. It wasn't a good learning environment for him. He decided to wait out and pass up on a year of college because he said, Dad, I'm not learning anything. Nobody's showing up for class, and when they do, they're on their phones or doing something else. Everybody blocks their screen out. This is not conducive to me paying money to go to college to learn nothing. I have a neighbor that lives in a cul-de-sac on my street. She's been a teacher getting ready to retire. My wife's talking to her, and she says, I heard these kids got pet set back a year. And she goes, minimum, two years for not being able to go to school and socialize with the kids, for being one-on-one with the teachers. I'm here today because, you know, my company I work for has their own human resource department. Their resource department goes out to firms like Kelly Services and other recruiting services to try. Because right now, everybody's having trouble finding workers, right? So they're not pulling any punches. I would just like to propose to the Commissioners here that in your job search for the next health director, health officer here for Livingston County, please don't pull any punches. Cast a wide net. Go out there and find the best candidate. Hire, hire third-party companies to come out and do some recruiting for you. Look at the resume. Pick the most qualified individual that has an understanding. Maybe they have children that, that were forced to mask or weren't allowed in restaurants and things like that. That's not, that's not Livingston County to me. Okay? And, and I hope that everybody here in this room appreciates, you know, that we lost a lot of freedoms for, you know, like Janine said. Yes, it was scary, but it turns out it wasn't all that scary. And I don't want somebody hired into this position that's going to have a knee-jerk reaction to just common sense. You know, the data that we were told to follow wasn't sound data. Everybody's coming out and saying, we jumped the gun. It was untested. It was on this, on that, and we made a mistake. And, and sorry, everybody, but I just hope that the next health officer here for Livingston County has a good head on their shoulders, can make decisions. Let, let, let the parents make that. Let me make my decisions. Let my wife make her decisions. Let my kids make their, my kids are adults now. Let them make their decisions on whether or not they want to go to school, whether or not they want to participate in social events. I don't want somebody to lock them out and, and, and force me to change my behavior. If I want to, you know, go someplace and eat at a restaurant, go to school and be in class with my classmates, I should have that right to do so.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
I'm good. I'm good, Wes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Caitlin Perry-Dyle from Brighton City.
Excuse me. I'll pick this off so you can hear me. Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. I'm here today to request that this commission consider bringing forward a resolution condemning the company TriBar for its recent spill of the poisonous chemical hexavalent chromium into the Huron Valley watershed. Just last week, Hamburg Township's board unanimously passed this resolution, which resolves to, one, demand action from Eagle and our elected officials to prevent any future releases of harmful chemicals by TriBar or any other company. Two, calls for the immediate disconnection of TriBar from the Wixom wastewater treatment plant while investigations continue into the careless procedures that are causing releases of harmful chemicals into the Huron River system. Three, it demands that such disconnection remain in effect until such time that safety procedures are tested and proven to prevent releases of harmful chemicals into the Wixom wastewater treatment plant. It also demands that TriBar be investigated for possible criminal violations related to the release of hexavalent chromium into the Wixom wastewater treatment plant by the appropriate enforcement agencies in cooperation with Eagle and DHHS, Michigan OSHA, the Oakland County Prosecutor, Michigan State Police, and the Michigan Attorney General, seeking criminal prosecution. It also demands that TriBar be assessed by Eagle for fines and levies to the maximum extent possible to cover the cost of investigations, testing, and subsequent cleanup costs, including improvements and enhancements into the Huron River ecosystem. The last two demands revolve around more strict rules for large industrial companies and their connection to our wastewater systems. I have sent this resolution to my Commissioner, Mr. Smith, who said he would pass it on to his colleagues representing Green Oak and Hamburg for consideration. I thank him for his response, but I would urge you all to consider the gravity of the second spill by this very same company. They are responsible for the PFAS in our water. This watershed impacts the entire county, not just Green Oak and Hamburg. The health and wellness of Livingston County residents and our environment rides on the quality of our water. Please take this seriously and pass the same resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hollain Quinn, Genoa Township.
Good evening. As Janine said, given the significance of this position and the power Michigan law affords the county health office during emergency events such as the pandemic, this process requires more rigor than the health office resolution currently outlines, which involves a mere 30-day posting for hire. This position calls for an extensive and comprehensive search by an outside firm. The citizens in the room would agree that the magnitude of this position warrants the additional cost. Do I have others that agree with that? Okay. As a human resources professional for over 37 years, I will tell you again that in this situation, every successful organization would implement both an internal and an external search for qualified candidates. The extra time and money spent in a comprehensive search by an outside recruitment firm would be an investment in the county health department because, number one, even if the internal candidate is ultimately chosen, the search would bring forward backfill candidates. The external search could also bring along a medical doctor to take on the position, eliminating the expense of the current shared part-time medical director's salary, a savings of over $100,000 per year. So this could be potentially a great return on your investment of $21,000. The ideal candidate for healthcare officer would be a medical doctor or nurse with a bachelor's degree. A master's degree in public health would be ideal, but not completely necessary based on the state's provisional approval of Mr. Matt Bolang. Considering the health officer's responsibilities to manage infectious outbreaks, it would be a huge asset for the candidate to possess hospital experience, someone who's been in the trenches, particularly during the pandemic. Such a candidate would be in a much better position to analyze the biostatistics and draw on their hospital experience to determine if mandates coming down from MDHHS are reasonable. Someone with medical experience and discernment and a personal backbone that would enable them to stand up, speak out, and push back against mandates and poor health policy based on non-scientific or skewed medical data. The disastrous directives from our leading health organizations highlight the necessity of hiring the most qualified and medically discerning person we can possibly find to become our new health officer. An external search, in addition to considering internal applicants and respondents, would give us the best odds of finding that individual. Thank you.
Yvonne Black, Marion Township.
Good evening. In the beginning of this whole process, there are people who felt that Matt Bolang was entitled to the position of health officer. Completely disagree. No one in this county is entitled to a government position. It's, this is not like private, private industry where people play favors and we get job positions. So that's one very strong concern of mine is the leaders of our county feel that Matt Bolang is entitled to this position because they, this is how Livingston County works. It's been doing this for a very long time. That I can't do in three minutes. But when I was coming up the elevator, there's a sign posted. It says, "Change happens one step at a time." Michigan, again, I will repeat, is at the top of the list of corruption in the country. Our governor illegally continued to violate the rights of the people of this state over and over by continuing to issue executive orders. The Supreme Court, a lawsuit, finally had to shut her down. The Director of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, her authority to enforce all of her gathering and face mask orders expired on April 20th of 2021. Did she stop issuing face mask orders? Absolutely not. She continued until a lawsuit forced her to abruptly end her illegal activity on June 22nd, 2021. The Livingston County Health Officer Diane McCormick and all her, I don't know what you want to call them, buddies in school superintendents, administrators from Livingston County. There's no law that allows them to enter into partnerships to basically exploit children for federal grant money. It's kind of disturbing. And so, yes, we need to do an exhaustive search for an appropriate health officer who not only has a background in medical and all of the other things, but who is open-minded to medical freedom and is not going to sneak around in secret meetings with the people in this county, who, there's just this arrogance in Livingston County that people just do whatever they want, regardless of violation of constitutional liberties, violations of the law. So, one, change happens one step at a time. And I'm really hoping that the county commissioners take it seriously, that we need to shift out of this socialist communist mindset in this state and get back to
I have 10 seconds.
the conservative constitutional republic that the United States and Michigan is supposed to be. Thank you.
Parker Smith, Genoa Township.
Hello, Commissioners. As I have spoke many times concerning the issues that I have with Ms. McCormick and obviously her replacement, I would like to just reiterate the fact that her illegal quarantining kept my son, who's 10 years old, out of school for 41 consecutive days. And he was a healthy child without COVID. So he missed a month and almost a half of school for policies, illegal policies that she put forth. So every single thing that everyone else has said up to this point, I concur. I'm not going to keep repeating it. But I would just like you to remember that story while I'm speaking. We appreciate the changes made to the job description of the health officer to make the health officer more accountable to the Board of Commissioners and their constituents. That is a good step. However, we want a health officer who has the medical understanding and personal strength to do what is best for our community and our children, not just rubber stamp a bad health policy handed down from Michigan Health Department. It's more likely to find someone like that by doing an exhaustive outside search. Though most people behind me won't speak today to save all of us some time, they do agree with this, and that's why they showed up here. So tonight, I move to amend Resolution 2022-08130, authorizing the selection process of the vacant health officer position. To add, after the first bullet, the Board of Commissioners directs human resources to conduct an exhaustive search, hiring an outside human resources firm to obtain additional qualified candidates besides internal candidates and applicants obtained by the usual posting process. All in favor? Say aye. So Commissioners, the citizens have spoken, and we ask you to please represent what your constituents want here tonight. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Oh, thank you. We'll go to Zoom, and it looks like we have three people. So Lori Cowan, if you give your full name and where your township you live in, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm in Unadilla Township. I'm Lori Cowan. I'm also asking the board to support and adopt the resolution that was submitted to you that Hamburg passed concerning TriBar that asked for the immediate disconnect and an investigation into the latest release of hexavalent chromium into the Huron River. The job of the commission is to help protect our residents, so TriBar needs to be held accountable so that an event like this does not happen again and endanger our community. I also wanted to comment on Commissioner Nakagiri's presentation last week concerning the courts and wanting to cut the budget by almost a half a million this year. You can't make a huge decision to slash a budget substantially on a fancy PowerPoint based on math formulas. There are real-life and working factors that also need to be considered. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I can't read the names, but who's ever in the upper left-hand corner? Brian, if you, if you give your full name and location, township, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, guys. My name is Brian Harrison. I do work with advisor care, home healthcare, advisor care companies. I'm actually from Rockford, Michigan, so I'm not a resident of Livingston County, but we do work with patients and families in Livingston County. I guess I wanted to start off just by thanking y'all for, first of all, being here tonight. I apologize in person, but I can't be here in person, rather, again, being in Rockford. But thank you all for being here and doing what you do as, as local elected officials. One of the things we wanted to bring up tonight, I think, is something that's been talked about in the past, but just some of the challenges that our families that we serve as a home care provider are facing as a result to their auto insurance and the lack now of financial support that those auto insurance companies are providing to home care entities like ourselves to actually continue the care and support these families are needing to remain at home and to remain with the ability of obtaining the care that they had to keep them safe and at home. And we've talked about this in the past. We'd certainly love the Livingston County Board to consider a resolution along with the other 35 counties now in Michigan that have making up more than 60% of Michigan's population. Again, we do believe this be an unintended consequence of, of our state wanting to amend and adjust a system that did need effective change and did need things to be altered, yet may have missed a few things that they themselves have reported as unintended consequences that can and should be corrected. Unfortunately, we do believe this to be a political decision not to amend and support these families, unfortunately, that are suffering. We do also believe Satan is at work in, in terms of working to slow the progress of support for these families who have paid for coverage that now can't receive it. And so we hope that the Livingston County Board will again join the other 35 counties in Michigan to either support a resolution, acting the state to amend the fee cap, not to redo or re-alter the entire auto insurance system because we know it needed change again, but just simply to amend the fee cap to allow home healthcare providers to effectively deliver services in, in a day and age that has seen wages far greater than we've ever imagined in, in home care and other delivery service support. So, again, my hope is, is that each of you, I know we've talked in the past, but each of you will consider this and, and talk about it amongst yourselves. Again, we thank you for being there. We do recognize that the legislature only has two or three scheduled days until the end of the year.
You have 10 seconds.
Which is why we thank you, which is why we thank you for being there because unfortunately, our state leaders don't believe that it's important to act on this issue right now. But with your help, we believe they will, and we believe they can. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, is it Lisa?
Madamama, yeah. Lisa Rosmirenowich, hi, from Hamburg Township. I just wanted to also chime in on the health director position. You know, many of us were called conspiracy theorists for, over the last two years, and I do have to say, we're five for five with the new information that's come out in terms of masks, vaccinations, which are actually harming people and causing adult sudden death syndrome. There are studies now that show that people who are vaccinated are seven times sicker than they were in 2020 and 2021. We know that these policies were made by two people who had no clinical background. Mr. Science himself, Fauci, as well as Mr. Tedros from the WHO. They have no clinical background. In fact, Tedros just said that monkeypox is a pandemic of international concern. Monkeypox is not airborne. Monkeypox is contracted by gay men having sex with themselves or with a dog. And I just have to point out that we need somebody that's got a clinical background in order to make wise decisions. And I think it's, it's been proven that these people who are, I don't even know what Tedros' background is, other than probably RICO violations. But I just want to reiterate that we need someone with a clinical background who is also cognizant of our constitutional rights. It doesn't do any good to have somebody that's got a medical background that drank, drank the Kool-Aid over the last two years. So just want to say, thank you. I know this is not a fun job at this point, but I just really appreciate you guys really considering what needs to be done in order to protect our rights, to protect our kids, and not put undue stress on them as they've had a heck of a last two years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Danielle Anjo, if you, if it's your location, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, this is Danielle Anjo, and I'm in Handy Township. And I'm just echoing a lot of the words that were said tonight. And I think that it absolutely is necessary that you do open up the job so that other people have a chance to apply. And you're looking for qualified people, not just recommendations by someone who previously had the title and the sheriff of our county. So I'm hoping that you guys listen to your constituents because that's actually your job is to listen to what we're asking you to do. You are representatives of us. And so I'm not asking for your opinion on what you want to see happen. I'm asking you that you do what you need to do and hold your position and do what we've asked you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Juneteenth. If you can give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hey, Stephanie Bright, Livingston County, Handy Township as well. I just want to weigh in on the whole Matt Bolang thing. I know we had the opportunity to hear Jay Gross speak when he was petitioning for our votes. And one of the things that he mentioned was that he's just rubber stamping an administrative position. But I'd like to read you how Matt Bolang personally shut down a business and what he thought about the COVID, we'll call it the scamdemic and violating our rights. But he said, this is a quote from Matt Bolang. "I do not know how the state is prioritizing enforcement at this time. We have forwarded the information to them." So Matt Bolang isn't just rubber stamping. He is actually forwarding information to the state in regards to what people in Livingston County are doing. And then Matt Bolang also continues to say, "We will continue to investigate complaints of non-compliance going forward and work with our local restaurants to help them be compliant," Bolang said. "We've also promoted the state's Michigan COVID." "We've also promoted the State's Michigan COVID-nineteen Safer Dining Program that will start soon. This is a voluntary program for restaurant owners to evaluate ventilation systems and other COVID-nineteen safety practice certified restaurants and have their information posted on the state's website." So Matt Bolang is actually going out and reporting people of Livingston County to the state. So for you guys just to sit there and say that we're just going to rubber stamp him and needed a great job is not okay, especially for Livingston County businesses. Our businesses have heard enough. We've been suffering enough, and we don't need any more tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else with their hands up, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the call to public and remind folks that there's a second call to public later at the end of the meeting. And next up on the agenda, item number seven is approval of minutes. We have minutes dated from a meeting, our meeting on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Next up is tabled items from previous meetings. There are no tabled items. Oh, wait, no, I take that back. I'm, uh, so there is a tabled item, so um, two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one one two, it's a resolution authorizing a contract with Sparrow Hospital of Pathology to provide medical examiner forensic pathology services, any supplemental appropriation. So looking for a motion to, um, remove from the table so we can discuss.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on removing it from the table? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. So, um, now looking for a motion to, uh, so we can discuss two thousand and twenty-two dash oh eight dash one one two.
I move the resolution.
A motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Smith. This was talked about earlier. It was tabled. The, uh, we have our medic, our EMS director, um, I'll let him start off his presentation, Director Felpasch.
Good evening. After the last meeting, Commissioner Dritt gave me two items to follow up on regarding this contract. Uh, the first was, uh, the sixty days to actually have the reports filed. Um, he was requesting twenty-one days and a penalty of thirty-five to forty dollars a day for late filing. Um, I did some research. Um, our previous medical examiner contract had a sixty-day timeline in it as well. Um, we presented, uh, the request to Sparrow using our vendor COPRO that helped us develop the contract. Um, the response we got was, uh, let me read it directly. Uh, final autopsy reports will be available in the county medical examiner's office within sixty days from the certified date of death ninety percent of the time, unless special diagnostic studies are necessary and such studies delay completion of the case, which is the exact language that was in our RFP that we requested, um, minus the penalty piece. They also gave us a bunch of data on how they've been doing it, meeting their timely filing. And, uh, year-to-date this year, they've done four hundred and eight death certificates with only nine of them exceeding sixty days, which is two percent. And in two thousand and twenty-one, they completed six hundred and forty with twenty-eight of them exceeding sixty days, which was only four percent. So they have an extremely good track record of getting their timely filing done. Um, I'm very comfortable with the proposal in front of us. If there's something else you'd like to discuss on this issue before we move on to the next, let's talk about it now.
Any questions follow up on this specific issue, um, that the director brought up? Looks like none. So, yeah, proceed, Director Felpasch.
So the second request from Commissioner Dric was he did not like the arbitration language that Sparrow has in the contract. I looked through our previous contract. I couldn't find anything related to arbitration or the language that Commissioner Dric suggested as far as how it could be resolved with litigation. Sparrow's reply was that this is the language that they have in all their medical examiner contracts. And this is also a language that Cole Stroker has approved for several other counties. So they're very comfortable with the arbitration language we have. That kind of takes us to a point where I, I, I don't know what else to do other than say this is the option that we have available to us. Uh, the last thing I'd like to leave you with is that the contract we have expires on September nineteenth. I know a few of the documents in the packet say it expires September first, but it is the nineteenth. And to remind you all that we have to have some sort of resolution by then because the board is required statutorily to have a medical examiner. So if we allow the, the current contract to expire and we don't have a new contract in place, we're gonna have a lot of hard decisions to make on how we're gonna have a medical examiner by September nineteenth or be in violation of state statute. With that, I'll take any other questions you might have.
Any questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, uh, we do have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Next up, item number nine on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved Gross.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Item number ten, uh, reports from Commissioners. Uh, are there any Commissioners, we have a report for their colleagues, uh, this evening?
I do.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
I had, uh, made some comments, uh, about Leo Hanifin's, uh, book about racial relationships in Livingston County. Uh, and after I made my last con, uh, comments, uh, my wife got this book. It's a, a short kind of history of, uh, Tom Tarpley, who, uh, was called to Fowlerville, uh, United Methodist Church uh, in Fowlerville, and he was black. And this, I, I'd like to just take a, a second to read uh, his reaction to coming to Fowlerville. I think it'd be a good addition to Leo Hanifin's book. Uh, see. Uh, his superior is telling the church is in Fowlerville. Uh, then it says, "My first thought was, you're kidding me." I said Fowlerville? Uh, adding, "I do not know, uh, who you're talking to. This is Tom Tarpley, who's black." "I know replied, and we want you to, to go to Fowlerville." What actually happened, the white, uh, minister from Fowlerville went to the church, the black church in, uh, Flint, and, uh, Tom Tarpley came to the, uh, Methodist Church in Fowlerville. Based on everything that I heard about Fowlerville and the whole area, I was ready to tell him, "No, thanks. If that is all you have, then I'll retire." Instead, I told him, "I need time to pray about it," which Gloria and I both did. One of the first things I did was to get on the internet and Google Fowlerville demographics. I found out that the population was ninety-six percent white, two percent Spanish, one percent black, and one percent other. Then I, uh, called the president of the Diversity Council in Livingston County and talked to her. She assured me that the reputation on the outside was nothing like it was in the community. Uh, and that was good to hear. Then I started to read as much as I could, uh, find on the area. Believe me, some of some of it was not very comforting or assuring, given my situation. Despite all, a few days later, I called the district superintendent and accepted the offer to go to Fowlerville to become the pastor of the First Methodist, uh, First United Methodist Church. And it was the best thing that happened to me since I married, uh, Gloria. Moving to, from Flint to Fowlerville was like going from hell to paradise. The first day of, after our arrival, Gloria and I woke up to a beautiful sunny day with two, uh, uh, of the prettiest deer we had ever seen standing in our backyard. Our new neighbors came over to welcome us, and everyone we ran into made us feel welcome. And it goes on, but, uh, that's, I, I think that that would be a, um, uh, a good addition to Leo Hanifin's book. When he turned seventy-two, he had to retire from the Methodist ministry, and he had to decide, "Am I gonna go someplace else, or I'm gonna stay in Fowlerville?" Well, he, he got a position in the United, uh, United, uh, Brotherhood Church in Fowlerville and chose to, uh, buy his own condo in Fowlerville. Uh, he passed away about a year and a half ago or so, and his wife is still living in Fowlerville. You know, they're, they were, so far as I know, they were very well received by everyone. So just, uh, I thought that'd be an interesting report, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Helsner. Uh, any other reports from Commissioners? I have a quick report. Um, I would just like to, um, clarify that, um, you know, my pointing out the, um, staffing issues at the courts is not just in one PowerPoint presentation. It is, was pointed out by the State Court Administrative Office back in, a report in two thousand and eleven that we were overstaffed with too many quasi-judicial officers. I attempted to do something about it when I first got on the board as a Commissioner. Um, and, um, there wasn't interest in doing anything. I since have done more research and, um, concluded that we are even, uh, have more of a staffing. It's just grown over the years because our caseloads have dropped by about thirty or forty percent since ten years ago. So an overstaffing condition that was present, not, not my opinion, it was the opinion of the State Court Administrative Office uh, back in two thousand and eleven, has, uh, been exacerbated. So I just wanted to clarify the record. Uh, with that, um, we'll move on to eleven, item number eleven, resolutions for consideration. Um, this evening, we have, uh, first up is resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one one eight. It's a resolution approving appointments to the Huron River Watershed Council. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Um, this was talked about in committee. Any further discussion, follow-up questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Uh, resolution passes. Next up is, um, uh, two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one one nine. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance and signing of the FY two thousand and twenty-three Emergency Management Performance Grant. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Helsner.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Helsnerman. Any, uh, follow-up questions, comments from Commissioners? This was also talked about in committee. Uh, this one requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioners Dric and Zajak are absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is, um, two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one two zero. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Huron Valley Guns LLC to provide uniform outfitting services for new personnel or replacements for various countywide departments. Is there a motion?
So moved Gross. Support Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. Um, this was also talked about in committee. Any follow-up questions, comments from Commissioners? Um, Commissioner Gross.
This item was discussed in, in committee, and Commissioner, uh, Plank had a question regarding the pricing over the five-year period. And I wanted to know if, if, if in fact the current prices would be held for all five years. Um, just this afternoon, she sent out an email and had gotten a response. And the, uh, that company here on Valley Guns is unwilling to lock in the price for five years. Uh, they claim that their, their pricing from their sources is going up pretty dramatically, and if they were forced to stick to their pricing, current pricing over the five years, they would probably be out of business. So I just wanted to mention that.
Do you have follow-up, Krista?
No, I did talk with Huron Valley. Um, I spoke with Erie over there, and he did indicate that he has no intentions of raising the prices just to raise them. He would only raise them if the manufacturer raised them. And if we would like to have a letter when they do raise those, he would be willing to supply that, but he has no intentions of just raising to raise them. It would just be a manufacturer issue that he has no control of.
Further questions or comments? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Um, next up is, um, two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one twenty-one. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ottawa County to provide juvenile detention bed rental services. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support Helsner.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Helsnerman. This too was talked about in committee. I'd ask if there's any follow-up questions or comments. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Resolution pass, passes. Um, next up is two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one twenty-two. It's a resolution authorizing the crime victim rights grant for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved Gross.
Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Reader. Um, once again, this was talked about in committee, but are there follow-up questions, comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, this one requires a roll call.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioners Dric and Zajak are absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next up is, uh, resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one twenty-three. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission to provide funding to comply with the Michigan Indigent Defense Act for state fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Motion Smith, support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. I see we have our public defender here. Um, if my colleagues have further questions or comments, or if the public defender has any more comments? Any? Looks like none. So, um, this one also requires a roll call vote.
Chairman, I, you'll have to pardon me. I was interrupted. I missed who moved and who supported this.
Um, Smith and, yeah, Gross.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioners Dric and Zajak are absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Motion carries.
Uh, next up is twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero eight dash one twenty-four. It's a resolution to retain the non-union employees, elected officials, Commissioners, and judges' benefit plans for the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. Is there a motion?
I move Helsner.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Griffith. This was also talked about in committee, but, um, I ask if there are follow-up questions from Commissioners? Um, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Um, next one is, uh, two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight dash one twenty-five. It's a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office and the county of Livingston to apply for and enter into a contract with the State of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-three Secondary Road Patrol and Traffic Accident uh, pre- prevention Grant Program. Is there a motion?
Motion Smith. Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. This was talked about in committee. I see our sheriff here, ready to answer. Any further questions? I see our sheriff here, ready to answer any further questions, if there are any, or field any comments. Looks like, um, we're all set. So let's see, this one requires a roll call vote also.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioners Dricke and Zajak are absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next up is twenty-twenty-two dash zero-eight dash one-twenty-six. It's a resolution authorizing the reorganization of certain positions with the Sheriff's Records Office. There a motion?
So moved Helserman.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Gross. Um, might, uh, offer of any questions or further comments? This also was talked about in committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Uh, let's see here. Next up, twenty-twenty-two dash zero-eight dash one-twenty-seven. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement for law enforcement services between the Livingston County Sheriff's Office and Heartland Township. Is there a motion?
So moved Reader.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Griffith. Again, this was reviewed in committee. I'd ask if there's any follow-up questions or comments. Oh, I'll seeing, I have a, uh, just a comment. I, I think this is a great thing. You know, I live in Heartland Township. We used to have, you know, dedicated sher- sheriff services. For whatever reason, the agreement, you know, wasn't renewed in years gone by. I'm, I'm glad to see the, the, uh, agreement move forward. So anyway, that's my commentary. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Um, next up is twenty-twenty-two dash zero-eight dash one-twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing an agreement for law enforcement services between the Livingston County Sheriff's Office and Tyrone Township. Is there a motion?
So moved Reader.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Griffith. Um, any follow-up questions or comments from my colleagues? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Resolution passes. Um, next up is a, uh, resolution amending the resolution regarding the selection and termination of non-elected depart- department heads. Is there a motion?
So moved Helserman.
Is there support?
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Um, this was talked about in the Personnel Committee. Is there any follow-up discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Uh, resolution passes. The next one, uh, the final resolution of the evening is twenty-twenty-two dash zero-eight dash one-three-zero. It's a resolution authorizing the selection process of the vacant health officer position. Is there a motion?
Support Helserman.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Helserman. This was also talked about in committee, the Personnel Committee. Is there follow-up discussion, questions, comments? Commissioner Helserman?
I have some, uh, uh, we got a, uh, we received a, uh, a letter for the job, job description of the, uh, health officer. Uh, and I just wanted to highlight, uh, some of the, uh, jobs of the health commissioner as described by our job description. The administrator, uh, uh, administers and enforces federal, state, local regulations pertaining to population health. Uh, that's number six. Uh, number eight develops, uh, directs the development of policies, programs, practices to promote the health of individuals, families, communities, including the development of short and long-term plans. Uh, direction main, uh, number eleven, uh, direction maintains emergency preparedness function. Uh, let's see. Then, uh, there are several others I think that are, um, um, these are requirements, they're not numbered, they're just a bullet point. Um, uh, the, the approval of the director of, uh, it, they must have the approval of the director of the Department of Community Health, Michigan. Uh, and, and that is not exactly so because there's certain, uh, they only, um, if I read the law correctly, uh, they can only tell whether the person meets the qualifications. Uh, they, they don't say whether, they don't give an approval to the person, only that he's, uh, he or she has met the, uh, uh, the statutory requirements. Uh, then, uh, another bullet point, a thorough knowledge of the principles and practices of population health, uh, state, uh, public health code, state committed disease rules, Safe Drinking Water Act, and Michigan food code. And the last one I think is probably the most, uh, important and I think is, uh, goes to the heart of concerns that have been expressed on this side of, uh, the bench and, uh, by our general public skill in assembling and analyzing data. Uh, and our health director needs to be a person that can read and understand and analyze. Uh, and I think that, as I've said before, our health department, uh, according to my dentist, puts out more understandable, uh, directions than the state of Michigan. This particular dentist could understand and follow the direction from our, uh, health department who takes what the state says and visits to Livingston County. And I think that's kind of what we're looking for, uh, in a health director. Uh, I've said before that, uh, uh, after consideration, you know, I'd be, uh, happy to, uh, put Matt Bowling's name forward, uh, without a search. However, that was my position then, as I've listened and considered. Uh, I, uh, have, I think it's wise that we, uh, post as it says here, but, uh, and I was on the committee, I told the committee, uh, when we discussed this and passed it forward, that I was going to put a amendment that we would, um, uh, uh, put a, an, uh, enter into agreement with Hiring Solutions to insist in the search. We've had an excellent, excellent, um, rapport with them. We have, uh, our, uh, many of our present directors have been chosen or they've helped in the selection. Uh, I, it's my opinion that Matt Bowling will be on the final list no matter what we do. That's my prediction. Um, uh, but I, I would like to, I, I would like to, uh, uh, make this amendment to the, I believe it's the second bullet point. Um, I don't have that, that in front of me, but I'd like these words, uh, to amend that to say, uh, that, uh, our HR department or, um, administrator, uh, along with posting, because it says posting, but in addition to posting, that we entered into agreement with Hiring Solutions to assist in the search for a replacement. Uh, I'd like those words added. That's my, uh, that's my amendment.
So there's, um, Commissioner Helserman has forwarded amendment. Is there support for the amendment? I'll support the amendment. Could you, when the clerk is, um, done writing, if you could read the amendment back?
An amendment to have human resources or the county administrator enter an agreement with Hiring Solutions to assist with the process.
Yes, in addition to the, as, in addition to what is said, because the, the Personnel Committee, uh, will, is, is charged with the, uh, the selection, uh, to bring to the board.
And you want that, um, included as bullet point number one?
Uh, whichever one says that, uh, okay, very good. Yes, I believe, yeah, it's with the bullet point one, to, after post, uh, to post that, uh, and to include entering into agreement. So it'd go after the posting.
Okay.
Because we want to post. But I, I think that we should, in my mind, and, uh, in my mind, the twenty-one thousand, little less than twenty-one thousand is, uh, worthy expenditure of money.
Um, comments or questions from commissioners on the amendment? Uh, I have, um, did you have?
Go ahead.
Um, uh, the chair generally goes last. If I go ahead, if you're.
Yeah, I, uh, by, by naming the HR company, we are, have now locked ourselves into an HR company. While they may be our current provider, they may not always be our current provider. Part two would be that if we're going through a posting process for thirty days, don't you mean if a suitable candidate has not applied, then?
No, no, that's part of the posting. Cause, cause, uh, when, when we do Hiring Solutions, I believe there's always a posting. Is that correct, Jennifer?
There's a concurrent posting, yes, with, uh, county on our website.
Okay, so I think that's just a normal current part. Uh, uh, I, we have not done, uh, other, I think it's been a while since we've done a, uh, a, a posting to consider another company. Um, have we made a, has our county made a decision that that is our comp, our company? Uh, or do we RFP the job every time we, we use them? That's.
Let, let me ask a question just for clarification. Commissioner Smith, would you like to amend the amendment to remove Hiring Solutions? And, uh, is that?
I, I'm simply saying these HR companies go in and out of business with the retirement or, or demise of the principal. So you, you may, you may want to reconstruct that.
So, yeah, I, uh, I would take out the name and then, uh, let that be, uh, whatever the process is to find the, the, uh, HR company to, that we have, have an outside HR company. I'm, I'm happy to not be specific in that regard.
Yeah, as the second or I, I'm comfortable with changing the language so that we don't specifically mention, um, Hiring Solutions. Yes, sir.
Comment on that? Um, if we're removing the company, but we're utilizing a search firm, we would then need to probably do an RFP to find another company, which is going to extend this out months. Um, so we do utilize Hiring Solutions for this. I don't know how many years it's been since we've used a different firm, but I just want to let you know, if, if we're not directed to use them, but we're directed to use a firm, we're gonna have to figure out which firm to use. And so that is gonna drag this out significantly longer. Um, and I don't know what the pricing would be with another firm. We don't, we don't know the people with another firm, so we'd have to do interviews and set it up, which we can do, but you're, you're pushing this significantly further down the road if we have to find a different firm to use. I just wanted to.
Okay, I will, I will, I will go with my original motion then, because that, that's the reason I named them, because, you know, because we have a track record with them, they know us. And if, if we're gonna do it, it only, in my mind, only makes sense to go with somebody that we.
I have a question. I, I, I don't think this is gonna happen, but if Hiring Solutions went belly up, you know, before we got started, I mean, what happens then?
We would come back to the next available board meeting and notify you that they've gone belly up and ask for direction from the board on issuing an RFP to find a new vendor. But short of them going belly up, I, I, my understanding has been that the board's been very comfortable with their procedures, their processes, their personnel. We had someone here last week, uh, from Hiring Solutions. So if they did go out of business or if they had some sort of a, you know, event that caused them to not be able to do the work that we require them to do, then we would come back at that time and ask for, uh, your guidance and, and your approval to find a different firm.
Any, that? Anybody else, um, want to chime in on the discussion, the debate?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, okay, on, uh, with these motions like this, okay, we only have five people here. On a motion that's a, to amend, it's only a fifty percent?
Yeah, it's a majority vote, but on the final vote for whatever, uh, the resolution looks like after it's amended, it needs five votes.
Okay, so at, at, at the end of the day, we need five votes to, to pass whatever we're gonna pass today.
Yes. Um, I wanna throw in a couple of comments and then we'll go around for a second round. And, um, so I haven't made a decision, you know, uh, with, with regards to is Matt Bowling the right guy or not. I have made a decision that I want a vigorous search, as vigorous as, as I can get. Um, you know, we have, you know, the policy, uh, that has been talked about is, you know, the, um, oh, I didn't forget how we worded it, but you know, um, the, we, we, we have a policy in place. We want to be, um, grooming the next leader for e- every department. And, um, so the, um, uh, Mr. Bowling is the Deputy Director of the Health Department. And there is, you know, some have offered, you know, um, opinion that, um, this, uh, grooming process, you know, he's, he's the heir apparent, and I, I certainly respect that. Um, however, we also have a policy in place that's, um, I think a longer-standing policy, and that's, uh, equal opportunity policy. So if we don't can do the, um, outside search, we are not, we will be not fulfilling our policy of looking at, uh, women, um, minorities, veterans, they, they, you know, um, and I, and, and when you look at the, from that standpoint, you know, uh, which of those two policies, you know, what should we give a little bit on? I think it's the, you know, the, the deputy, um, policy. I, I think we should hold true to the, um, equal opportunity policy. It's been in place a lot longer in, in the county. And, um, you know, this is, in, in my opinion, opinion of one commissioner, the most important appointment we will make because this position has the capability of infringing on, uh, citizens' rights. And no other appointment that we make, in, in my opinion, has that authority. And, um, um, anyway, it's important that we, um, um, do an exhaustive search. We, you know, I, it may be the case that, uh, Mr. Bowling is the, after, when it's all said and done, the, the most qualified, and I'd be happy to support him once I get a chance to see the, um, you know, all of the candidates. But I, I think that, um, I'd, I'd like to have, um, to see a, a, a wide net cast and, um, and I'm, that's why I'm supporting of the amendment. Are there other follow-up questions or comments before we vote on the amendment? Are there other follow-up questions or comments before we vote on the amendment? Commissioner Gross.
Inasmuch as the subject of the equal opportunity policy has been brought up, I guess I would like to know what that policy states and if there's any indication of, uh, possible exceptions. We don't have the policy in front of us. I guess, uh, if somebody can find it, I'd, I'd like to know what it says.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I would think that our county uh, is an, you know, I, well, as far as I understand, Livingston County is an equal opportunity higher, and I think that we're proud of that. I, I think, uh, uh, whether, whether it is on paper or not, I don't know, but I can't imagine it not being on paper, put it that way.
Would you like to?
Um, our, our legal counsel has, um, yes, go ahead. You have the floor, Mr. Norfolk.
So this is from your current, uh, personnel manual. Equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity policy. Note this policy shall apply to all county elected officials, department heads, union and non-union county employees. It is the policy of Livingston County Board of Commissioners to provide equal employment opportunities to qualified persons without regard to race, creed, color, sex, age, national origin, religion, marital status, height, weight, disability, genetic information, or any other protected status. Disabled employees who feel accommodations needed to perform their job must notify the community research director in writing of the need for reasonable accommodation within 182 days after the date the employee knew or reasonably should have known that accommodation was needed. Failure to properly notify Livingston County will preclude any claim that Livingston County fails to accommodate the disabled employee. Livingston County will make accommodations that do not pose undue hardship to the county. The policy statement.
Thank you.
Question for our attorney.
Uh, Commissioner Smith, ac- actually, um, if you want to, I would ask that you join us here so that when you reply, Mr. Norfolk, that, uh, people on Zoom can hear you. I don't know, I don't think so, but.
So thank you for attending today.
Sure.
Uh, my, my question is, does our posting process do anything to negate any part of our equal opportunity?
So your postings are compliant with your policy, so we, that's included in the posting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else before we vote on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye, aye.
Amendment passes four to two. So now we have a amended motion, um, or amended resolution. Um, are there comments? Uh, questions regarding, um, amended resolution? Just a reminder, we, you know, to do anything, we still need five votes. So no, no, um, questions, all those in favor of the amended resolution signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye, aye.
Um, four to two, the motion, um, fails. We'll move on the, um, we'll have to have another plan put forward. Um, item number 12, accounts payable reports. There are two items on there. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve both the claims dated August 22nd and the payables dated July 30th through August 12th. Is there a motion to pay the claims and payables?
Motion to approve en masse.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Uh, resolution passes. Um, item number 13, uh, is our final call to the public. Uh, anybody wishing to address the board here, um, will have two minutes. Um, and I'm going to set my timer to two minutes. I'll say, uh, 15 seconds when you have about 15 seconds left. Um, Ms. Iyer.
I just have a quick comment that, um, Commissioner Gross came in late and didn't hear the public comments, so. Um, that's unfortunate when it reflects his vote. And, um, you know, it's a failure of, um, I mean, we're supposed to be able to, um, our commissioners are supposed to be able to hear their, their constituents. And I felt there was a failure in this whole process as a result. And I wish that, I also wish that there were more commissioners here because this is such an important decision. And there are commissioners that are absent, that could have contributed to this, to this decision. I mean, this decision is so important. It's so far-reaching, and it's just very unfortunate that we have absent commissioners and one commissioner that was late. And I'm not trying to judge you, Commissioner Gross, for being late. I've been late to many things in my life. But this is such an important decision. I really wish that this, this whole vote would take place again. Um, you know, when we have a full, uh, nine commissioners and everyone's, hears the public comments because, um, you know, we're not uneducated people, okay? We have engineering degrees, we have medical degrees. I mean, we're giving you information that I feel should, should, um, should you, that, that you should really consider. So I'm just really disappointed at this, this, this evening and, um, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just, I'm just stating, um, my observations. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Um, Ms. Quinn, right?
Helen Quinn, Janine Township. I just want to echo everything Janine said. She, no one could have said it better than that. And I do want to thank the commissioners that did take the additional input to heart and, you know, evaluate based on that. But again, it'd be nice to wrap this up. And again, Janine just said it perfectly. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith.
In echoing the same sentiment, I'm very disappointed that this has to continually happen where the majority comes and speaks to you and we share personal stories, personal feelings, we research topics. And you, it feels like a slap in the face over and over. So quite honestly, November can't come here fast enough. And I hope that some of you will decide to build the bridge instead of burning it down with your constituents. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Um, seeing none, I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, close the, uh, call to the public. And, um, we have a closed session. I would remind my colleagues, we, it's not a two-thirds roll call, but we do need six votes, so everybody has to approve going into closed session. So looking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a, discuss a written legal opinion. MCL 15.268H. Is there a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Uh, yes.
Commissioners Drick and Zajak are absent. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So it'll take a little bit of time to get set up for a closed session here, so.
I vote we move back to open session.
Support.
We have to.
Oh, we did.
We, we are in open, so we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Uh, motion to adjourn if we're all.
Or. Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?